Thank you, Stephanie. Yes, we'd like to call our meeting to order November 28, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have a short consent agenda.
Citizen input today?
Oh, we do have. Yes, I guess this is our meeting, isn't it? Anyone? I do have blue sheets. Anybody on Zoom, Stephanie? No. Okay. We have one regarding the not having a private sewage company owner in Tamalo. And then we have something, suggestions, Measure 109 implementation regarding psilocybin, time, place, manner. Thank you. And then we have an email, I believe, which came in today regarding their dog was in a trap on public lands. So that information. So thank you for those emails. And nobody's turned in in the room then? All right. So we can go on then to consent. I'm so used to Monday, but now this is really not.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, thank you. So we have our first presentation. Stephanie?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Stephanie Robinson, Administrative Analyst. So during our last discretionary grant review in October, the board indicated an interest in learning more about the organization, Sriponya, and its work. Today with us, we have Jennifer Eels and Greg Mead, founders of Sriponya, to give a short presentation to the board. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to them.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice to see you all. Nice to meet you formally.
Yeah, we appreciate you extending the invitation. We didn't expect to be sitting before the county board commissioners at the stage we're in right now. So we are really grateful to be able to be here and share what we're doing, what our work is. And we come to the work that we do, and we keep it as simple as we possibly can. Our core begins with having people that participate in our programs do a deep dive into exploring, who am I? One of the things that addiction takes us away from is who we truly are. And in my case, you know, I've been sober, clean and sober for 11 years. So I come to the work that I do from my own experience, my own desperation, my own journey into recovery. And it's been impactful to come home to myself. And so that's where we begin as we start working with people. That chances are that a person that we work with hasn't been in touch with themselves for a long, long time. They're probably a little bit out of treatment and maybe a little bit out of sober living because we don't work with folks that are like prior to treatment or even detox. But we focus, we begin to focus on bringing people home to themselves. And we use cutting-edge research that's being done by people like Gabor Maté. And, you know, he's written a number of books and is one of the experts in the field of trauma as it relates to addiction. The other thing that comes to mind is a lyric from U2, and it goes like this. "We tend to mock things we don't understand. And they say that what you mock will surely overtake you. And then you become the monster, so the monster will not break you." And that's usually the course that people find themselves taking as they go into their condition of addiction and substance use disorder, mental health challenges. And then we begin to invite people back to who they are. So that, living in that condition of having become the monster and not even understanding who I became and who the people we work with become, we invite them back home. And we do that through a number of channels. And I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer.
Yeah, we have three pillars that we just came about with, the first one being character. And I think that's important. It starts with the individual, right? You can't have a meaningful relationship, or you can't even have a meaningful community if the individuals themselves don't have character. So we focus on the individual, and then it's all about community building from there. And as Greg mentioned, we're into supporting a long-term recovery community and integrating that with the Central Oregon community at large. And then creativity. So what we can create together collaboratively. And our main focus is creating safe spaces where people can become their authentic true self. And with the way that we've been called, so the first question that Greg was answering was, who are we? And then I'm answering the question is, how do we serve? So we've, we just got funding from the Roundhouse Foundation and from Central Oregon Health Council, who Central Oregon Health Council has been amazingly supportive for us launching. We've been so grateful to them. And we've been able to, we've been really grateful. We've been able to collaborate with Beth Lamb Hin, Shepherd's House, The Tower Theater, Bend Film. Bend Film, we're collaborating with Bend Film and Papa Lakshmi Shad to bring the film that we're bringing tonight to Warm Springs. So we're developing a relationship with the Tribes of Warm Springs, really all about like reconnecting to who we are as human beings. And our three-pronged approach with the Sriponya Central Oregon Recovery Collective is, one, through sober events. And our main sober event that we've been doing is a film each month. We're launching in, it's been in Bend, but we're expanding to Redmond and hopefully Madras as well. I mentioned that we're bringing that one film to Warm Springs. And then we have a panel afterward. So the film that we did in October was about suicide prevention. And we had a panel afterward, which was really amazing. Then we had a film on opioid and alcohol addiction. And then we've also had the film on the wisdom of trauma with Gabor Maté. And we had a, so that really brings the community together. It's been really a warm environment that people have really enjoyed participating in, and it de-stigmatizes like homelessness and addiction and mental illness and trauma. Because we start to see that we all are non-different, right? We've all experienced trauma. Like we, some of us haven't responded to it with alcoholism, but maybe we're, you know, on Netflix 24/7, or we're video gaming, or we're consumer, you know, we're purchasing things, like, or we're, you know, ultra athletes, whatever. Really walking through our own pain is what we're actually inviting people to do, is to take responsibility for their own pain and to walk through it to the other side. So the films, one way is how we do outreach. The second way is through our website. We, Greg used to have a podcast called Light and Spoon, so he's implementing a website for Sriponya. It's going to have a podcast and video storytelling, and then also through our programs. So we did partner with COCC on the event that we had at The Tower Theater. We're hoping to partner with them to actually have a place where we could do our programs and the films and kind of bring it all together. And really what we want to do is we want to have more heart-focused connection and conversation where we really do come back and realize, you know, we are non-different. We may, you know, at the heart of the matter, we're really non-different. We are all struggling from the same, suffering from the same, you know, not-enoughisms, or whatever that may be. So, yeah, our main, main focus is really not to go to the, you know, like, so one of the things at COHC that we were dealing with was, you know, how do we bring people back to life? Like, we're going to spend money on Narcan, right? Because everyone's having opioid addiction. Well, we really, Greg and I are idealists, and we believe that we could go to the root of the problem, which is a paradigm shift, and that people need to make decisions based out of love and service, not out of fear. So we really want to, that's, we really want to create community that is a safe place, that is founded in unconditional love, forgiveness, and service. So thank you for listening to us. We really appreciate being here. This really...
Well, yeah, so we all saw the application for a discretionary grant, and we're like, well, I didn't have a relationship. So I was like, well, let's learn about this. Tell me about the name.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that's interesting. The name is actually two languages coming together. The first is Sanskrit, and the word shri means beautiful or radiant. And then we were on a Zoom call with one of the grant, one of the people that work in the grant department for the Collins Foundation. He happens to be Swahili. And he was asking us about the second part of our name. And he said, you know, if you pronounce it with a long O, ponya, it means cure or healing. So we, you know, have adopted, you know, two languages telling the story of our hearts' desire, the work that we do, and who we are in the world. So...
Right. Now we know more.
That's it.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Thank you so much for coming in today.
If I could ask, if I could ask a question?
Yeah.
When we talk to, when we talk to people involved in health and, or health and human services within the county, we're, I'm constantly asking people, well, how do you, how do you measure, or how do you understand the impact that you're having? And what is the impact that you're having? Like, you know, based on those, based on those measurements, or monitoring, or evaluation? And the reason I ask this is because we did, we did first hear about your organization, your project through, in the context of a grant application. And we are constantly having to make these decisions about, you know, putting $2,000 here or somewhere else. And those metrics, you know, understanding what the impact is, and, you know, having data or evidence, or, you know, anecdotes, stories, you know, something to, you know, something that helps us understand what the impact of the service or the program is, is really helpful for those funding allocation decisions. So I would just love to have, to hear from you, kind of, what is success? How do you measure whether you're being successful? And, yeah, I guess maybe there's those two things.
Sure.
Yeah. What I want to share is, we had a potluck, and it was just a beautiful gathering. And we've been meeting people all over Central Oregon. So it came together. And we did have a gentleman who was an elder from the Tribes of Warm Springs sharing his story about having been part of the boarding school system and then going to Vietnam. And just hearing his story, and it was in our living room, and there were, there was like a diverse group of people there. But then, you know, a black woman who was there was like, wow, I'm amazed you're sharing this story in a room of white people. And that woman shared with us later that she goes out to a lot of gatherings, and it's kind of mundane, like, everybody's talking about, you know, whatever, social stuff. But when she came to our potluck, it felt like she was coming home. And so that's what we invite people to this culture of like, love and care for one another. So it's, it isn't something like, you know, we don't, we don't have the evidence-based, you know, numbers yet. And I feel like, go ahead.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm chomping at the bit here. So, so the evidence, you know, we approached this with the three types of work that we do. The first are the films. We've sold out every film that we've presented, and we're on our sixth film.
Except The Tower. We didn't sell it.
Well, The Tower was, had 250 tickets that were sold. And, and it was the type of event that The Tower Theater approached us and asked if they could do it as a community service. So the tickets were free. And there were, so that's the first thing that, from a community standpoint, there is a receptivity and a curiosity about what is being presented. The other thing is, we have done a couple of our courses, and the percentage of people that have continued to remain sober is far beyond the 5% to 10% that normally come, that normally have long-term sobriety coming out of treatment and/or 12-step programs. And then the third thing is something that we're curious about, and that's developing our online presentation to present the, our courses, to present the storytelling, to have, to provide access for people that need help but may not be ready to step out and ask another human being yet for that help. Because it requires courage. I remember the first phone call I made saying, man, I can't get a handle on this. I need help. It took me years to get to that point. So, you know, the first two, the films and the courses, while we don't claim to be evidence-based, the evidence is that, that, first of all, the reception from the community regarding the films, the impact that our courses have had for those that have gone through it, and then building out the digital content to create a community that can lower the bar of entrance and access to help.
And we do have a big vision of having a retreat center right by Smith Rock, so right in the middle of Central Oregon, and then having a detox center in Madras, and then getting people from the beginning into detox, and then having an inpatient recovery. And then they can come work at the retreat center that we're going to have, so they'll have along, you know, the long-term sobriety housing, and have a farm and all of that. Like, we have a vision, and we're just, we're just inviting people in to recovery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're doing the work that we're doing with the resources we have today.
There you go. Well, as I say, thank you very much for joining us. Yeah, as I say, it's just learning about what you're doing, the relationship, and I can feel the passion and the energy on the subject. So thank you so much. Yeah, as I say, this is a follow-up from, you know, the discretionary grant program. So at this time, I, you know, I don't mind, you know, bringing it around again. I don't know that we're going to make a decision today, but it's great to meet you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, how much did the Health Council donate?
So far to date from them, we just got approved for $55,000, but they've done $25,000? No, $20,000. So to date, from Roundhouse and Central Oregon Health Council, we've had $90,000. Yeah.
To date?
To date, yeah. Which we're really excited about, because that, that's enough to get started. Yeah, yeah.
And we're actually having our launch for the Recovery Collective.
Oh, yeah.
On December 13th in Redmond, where we're actually launching, you know, doing a public launch of Sriponya Recovery Collective.
And you all are invited. Yeah, everyone's invited. It's at the SCP Hotel in Redmond.
At 9 o'clock.
At 9:00 AM. And our board is going to all present and speak too. And we have a very diverse, incredible board that has amazing life experiences, so you won't want to miss it.
Well, that sounded like a pitch.
No, they are pretty amazing people.
They are.
Yeah, pretty amazing people to be able to work with.
No, congratulations on 11 years to be able to lean it sober.
Yeah, thank you. Jennifer just celebrated 18 today.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah.
That is, it's, thank you. I appreciate you coming in this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Great. And send us an invite for the event on the 13th then.
Great. We will.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. It looks like Kim is on the agenda, but it must be Dave.
Yeah, you get stuck with the junior varsity today. I'm sorry.
Oh, gosh, how did that happen?
Yes, Commissioners, what you have next are actually two public hearings. I would suggest you handle them separately.
Yes.
There's two public hearings for annexations into the River Forest Acres Special Road District. And there's two separate board orders. The first one, which is Order 060, involves John and Catherine Barge annexation. And this would be the time for the board to, after this brief staff report, open the public hearing, call for any testimony, and then consider approving Order Number 2022-060. As you know, we get these from time to time, and this is statutory process that requires these come before the county commissioners. The Special Road District has approved the annexations and is happy to have these folks come in. The assessor's office and the clerk and community development have all reviewed it for legal requirements, and you have documentation in your file that that's all been satisfied. So I would suggest if the board's inclined to call, to go ahead and open the public hearing, call for any testimony, and then take action on the two separate orders. And like I say, this first one would be for the Barge, B-A-R-G, Barge annexation, and then we'll handle 061 after that.
Okay, so we should open the public hearing and then close it, right, Dave? And then vote on the one, and then we'll...
Open it, call for any testimony. I don't know.
Right, okay.
Anybody, but...
We need to call a public hearing open now on order approving John and Catherine Barge annexation into the River Forest Acres Special Road District. So is there, I don't see anyone in the room. Stephanie, are there any raised hands? No raised hands. Thank you, Dave, for that. So then, as you said, it has been approved by all the parties that be. Let's close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
So for me, yeah, just a little bit more. So this is like across the river from traditionally maintained roads. I mean, this is kind of the content of the Road District. Is there any, anything interesting here? I mean, it's just...
No, pretty straightforward. Nothing, nothing to cut our attention, anyway.
Okay. So this is just expand the capacity of the Road District that little bit by having a little bit more revenue, and the commitment, as I say, kind of across the river from the rest of the property. So there must be a bigger picture.
That's my assumption, but...
Yeah, as I say, yep, yep, and yeah. Yep, understood.
But I think you did hit the nail on the head. It's some additional tax revenue.
For the Road District, yeah.
Which is always good. Commissioner Chang, did you have anything you wanted to add?
So as I say, with knowing that the Road District is, has accepted, I will support. So I'll move Order Number 2022-060.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes on the order approving John and Catherine Barge annexation into the River Forest Acres Special Road District. So...
The next one up, Commissioners, is a public hearing to consider annexation of the Helmut, Lee Helmut property into the River Forest Acres Special Road District. As noted previously, staff has reviewed this, and it meets with all the statutory obligations and requirements. And this would be the time to open the public hearing, call for any testimony, and then take action on the order.
Okay. Let's see. I'm opening the public hearing now. I don't see anyone in the room. We have no blue sheets that want to speak. Stephanie, are there any raised hands on Zoom? No raised hands. So therefore, let us close the public, public hearing at this time. And any comment from the Commissioners?
No comments.
So as I say, I mean, it's just interesting, this is the content. Looks like this is for three parcels. One parcel has a right-of-way defined at full width, another one has a half a width, and then another one doesn't even have the width. So there's more work to be done, it looks like, after this approval. But just an observation once again.
And the other party, the OR party, the Donna Shoup, she doesn't have to be mentioned, then?
That's correct.
Okay. Just, thank you. So no other comments? Do we have a motion?
Move approval, move approval of Order Number 2022-061.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes on order approving Lee Helmut annexation into River Forest Acres Special Road District. So, okay, Dave?
Hey, the next matter you have is public hearing and for consideration of Board Order 2022-063, which would approve a city of Bend annexation into the Bend Park and Recreation District. The city has filed a petition to annex property into the Park and Recreation District. The city and the district have both approved the petition. The assessor's office has certified the petition, and the Department of Revenue has issued preliminary approval for the legal description of the annexation. So as with the others, this would be the time to call, open the public hearing, call for any testimony, and then take action on the order.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing? Yes.
I'm just here to represent the Park District. I don't have testimony, per se, but if you guys have any questions, because I don't think a city representative from the city could be here, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for joining us. So you have no comment then, unless we have a question? Stephanie, is there anyone with a raised hand on Zoom? Well, do I leave it open? Do you have any questions?
So just acknowledging, this is an 80-foot strip associated with this partial that was held on for something in the past, and now it doesn't need to be held on to. If you want to come testify, just yet. So this will just give us the rest of the story.
Get your name into the record. That would be lovely.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name's Henry Stroud. I'm a planner with the Bend Park and Recreation District. The area being considered for annexation today is a former city right-of-way that the city is in the process of vacating. The area was supposed to be... supposed to be annexed into the Park District when the city expanded its boundary as part of the Juniper Ridge Expansion Area. However, when the actual annexation agreement went through, this area was inadvertently left out of the description. Now that the city's vacating the property, it's important for the Park District to have the new owners be incorporated into this, into the Park District, so they're paying their fair share of taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, I mean, if the property is owned by the city, are they paying taxes?
The property, the right-of-way is currently being vacated and is being distributed to the adjacent property owners.
That's not Skyview Middle School.
No, as part of the lot line adjustment and the vacation process, the property first had to go to the school district, and now it's been deeded, one, to an adjacent private property owner, and then the city has taken control of the other portion of the deed.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. With those comments, I believe I can close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Henry, for joining us. Are there any other comments? It is 2.4 acres. Eighty, that's, I know, I looked at that going, wow, not that wide. Is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Order Number 2022-063.
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So thank you very much. Thank you, Dave. Okay, we're now looking at item number six. It looks like, Dr. Bacho, are you taking the lead on this?
Yes, Commissioner. So, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm presenting with Kathy Christensen. I'm the Program Manager for Public Health Advancement and Protection. So that includes a communicable disease program, STD, HIV, and immunization programs. Kathy is here with me. She's the supervisor for the STD, HIV programs. So we are here to request approval to accept funding from OHA for HIV Early Intervention Services and Outreach Program. Also, would like to request approval for authorization to convert two limited-duration FTEs to regular FTE for this EISO program.
Well, it's great to see these dollars are coming through.
Sorry, what was that?
I was just acknowledging that the dollars are coming through from the state for this program.
Absolutely, yes. We have $1.5 million coming through, so that's good news. So this program was awarded to six local public health authorities, starting in 2018, to deliver HIV Early Intervention Services and Outreach. Deschutes County fortunately was one of the six counties that were elected to take part in this program. It's one of the high priorities of the bigger vision of ending new transmissions of HIV in Oregon, and also ensuring that all people who are living with HIV are able to get access to high-quality care, which is free from discrimination and stigmatization. So this grant supports a couple of things. Disease Investigation is one of them. Disease Investigation and Partner Services, throughout the COVID pandemic, the HIV STD team was able to maintain Disease Investigation and Partner Services for all HIV, syphilis, and gonorrhea cases. We're able to provide outreach testing through these funds that were provided through OHA, and that significantly increased our HIV STD testing regionally. Through these grants, we're also able to provide outreach to providers and also engage them in discussions to increase HIV and STD screening. We were also able to prevent a lot of syphilis and congenital syphilis cases through this grant. This grant also helps us provide referral services. So we do assess clients' needs with respect to HIV and STD testing and prevention, and also other services that they need, such as drug treatment, housing, and behavioral health services. We are able to provide these referral services for all these through this grant. This grant has also helped us to provide health literacy and education. We are able to provide HIV medical information and the importance of antiretroviral therapy and viral suppression for people living with AIDS and for people suspected of having HIV or priority populations. We also provide access and linkage to care through this grant. We are able to engage people with HIV and link them to care within 30 days of diagnosis, and all this is made possible through this grant. And if HIV-positive folks are on medication and they are virally suppressed, the transmission is very low. There's no to-low transmission. So we are able to educate HIV patients about that, to encourage them to take their medications. We also provide targeted outreach to help people at risk for HIV and STDs, to know their status and to link people living with HIV who are currently not in care with HIV care and services. Through this grant, we are also able to provide community engagement. We are able to engage the community advisory boards. We work with an agency called Collective. So Collective is a platform, they provide a platform that helps us connect each member of the patient's care team for effective collaboration. So we are able to tell where our patients are, who is being, what they are being treated for, so that we can do follow-up if needed. We also collaborate with St. Charles to follow up on patients who access their ER or on their electronic health records, and we give presentations to provide resources and to providers, and we also provide them with resources. We work with AIDS Education and Training Centers on provider trainings and events. We actually have one coming up on December 7, and we'll be inviting all providers who are involved in STD work. We are encouraging them all to be there. It's a presentation that we think that a lot of providers will benefit from. So this grant was awarded, has been awarded, this is the Phase Two. We've finished, it comes this December, we'll be ending with Phase One. So Phase Two will be starting in January. So we'll be receiving $1.9 million, as I said earlier on, and that will span from January 1st to 2023 to June 30th, 2027. So, so we'll be using this funds to do all of this very important work. OHA is currently converting the grant into a program element. So once that is done, it's in the pipeline. We should hear back from them in less than a month. It's going to be converted to Program Element 73. So we are hoping that this would make this funding more sustainable. So we are requesting also for your approval to accept these funds, and also to convert two of our limited-duration FTEs that have been responsible for some of this work to regular FTEs, because we do think that these funds are going to continue. Although nothing is guaranteed, we do strongly believe that since it's being converted to a program element, this will become stable funding in the future. So for year one, it will span from January 1, because it's been changed from a calendar year to a fiscal year. So because of that, the first year has 18 months, just to incorporate the fiscal year. So January, year one will span from January 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024. Year two will be July 1 to June 30, 2025, and year three, July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026. And year four will be July 1, 2026, to June 30, 2027. So these funds will cover 0.7 FTE of our community health specialist two position, and 0.88 FTE of our public health, one of our public health nurse two vacancies. The remainder of these positions are paid through Program Element 07, which is the HIV block grant, and so that will cover the community health specialist two, and then the other public health nurse two would receive the other 0.2 FTE funding from Program Element 1, which is the state communicable disease grant. So hopefully, we can get this changed from limited duration to regular FTE with these funds. So that is all we have today, and we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Oh, Dr. Bacho, do you know how much the budget was for the original grant when it was applied in, what, you said 2018?
Correct. Kathy, do you remember how much it was? Yeah, mute it.
Technology.
I can look up the exact number, but I, it was less than what we're getting for this Phase Two.
Okay, I mean, I just was wondering, with inflation being what it is, if they actually jumped up the appropriate amount. So it would be nice to know, Kathy, just for the record. Thank you.
So, yeah, it's actually, inflation has been catered for even the, for the previous grant compared to this grant, and also from year to year, inflation has been factored in. If you look at the spreadsheet, year two, the cost of year two is more than year one, and year three is more than year two and year one. So inflation has definitely been factored into, even for Phase Two.
My question was about the duration of this grant period. It seems kind of unique to get a, to get funds, to get a funding commitment over a four-and-a-half-year period. And I was just curious whether you have any insight on why OHA is willing to do that for this program, which is a great program, and I'm really excited that, that this long-term funding is available. But it would sure make our life a lot easier if there were more long-term funding opportunities like this made available, as opposed to just, you know, regular biennial or annual funding. So just curious about the structure of this grant program.
I think OHA is trying to make this funding as stable as possible. I, I do think that this work is going to continue beyond even the 4.5 years, and I think OHA is aware that this work is very important, and it would probably most likely than not continue even beyond the 4.5 years that we've been awarded. So I think they're knowing that this work will continue, even the 4.5 years, I think is just a safety measure. We do believe that even after the 4.5 years, they'll give us, they'll extend it, and will continue to get more funding for it. And that is also the reason why they are changing it to a program element, to make it more stable, because I just can't imagine, we all hope HIV would end in 4.5 years, but there's also a very high chance that HIV will not end. We've been fighting HIV for several years now, and as long as we have HIV, we have to do this very important work to be able to mitigate it. So I think they know at the back of their minds that this work is going to continue for a very long time. That's why they are confident, given us 4.5 years' worth of funding.
I have a little more insight on that. They, so the reason it is four-and-a-half years right now is that they were going forward, the program was moving forward with the second phase of a grant cycle. And so we were down that road towards doing a Phase Two grant when leadership at OHA decided that this program needed to be changed into a program element. And so by that time, these initial grants had already been approved, and so they worked together to, like, move forward with changing it to a program element, but also honoring the approvals of the grant, the Phase Two grant that they already had in place. So unfortunately, after four-and-a-half years, it's probably going to move to a year-to-year basis, because it will be the program element. But they're honoring what they had already approved for a Phase Two.
Got it. Thank you.
So it looks like we need two motions for this?
I will move approval to accept Oregon Health Authority's Early Intervention Services and Outreach Funding.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
And I'll move approval for the Resolution 2022-075 to convert two limited-duration FTEs to regular FTE positions within the Health Services Fund.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Seems like every week we're adding a few more full-time FTE there. So I know, as I think I said this last time, you know, the mid-year budget review and then the annual budget review, just looking at the big picture, so. Just observations at that point.
Great. Okay, Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes, and yes. Definitely, the FTE will be noted. Are those positions all, they're all full now, though, aren't they, Dr. Brockel?
Yes, they are full FTE. Part of their funding is currently from the EISO, and the funding, the other two funding sources that I mentioned.
Okay, and they are filled. Thank you so much.
They are filled, correct.
And you anticipate that those two people who are filling those limited-duration positions right now will then roll over into regular positions?
Correct.
Well, that's a great thing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all your help.
Okay, we come to item number seven. Janice Grosso and Holly Harris, thank you so much for joining us.
Holly Harris, I'm here today as the Acting Deputy Director for Behavioral Health.
Hi, Janice Grosso, Director of Health Services.
So we're here today to request approval to apply for Pacific Source Behavioral Health Workforce Diversity Grant. So a little background on this is Pacific Source is extending a one-time, non-competitive funding to a limited number of behavioral health providers, and has made about $147,000 available to Deschutes County Health Services. The goal of this funding really is to diversify the workforce so that Pacific Source members have increased access to behavioral health providers who are more reflective of the cultures and languages of Pacific Source members. So some of the aim of the funding is to retain culturally and linguistically diverse behavioral health providers, decrease behavioral health service utilization gaps, increase member experience in behavioral health care, and improve diverse behavioral health provider experience in providing services and are working in behavioral health settings. So if approved to apply for these funds, we would intend to use these to provide training to direct service providing staff, increase our interpretation contracts, services, and also hire a temporary 20-hour-a-week language access liaison who would coordinate all of those services, which is actually quite extensive across the department. We would also like to increase our engagement efforts with the Latinx population through these funds, and the funds would begin in December 2022 and run through October of 2023. It's a great opportunity. Not, we don't have to, we have to submit an application, but the funds are there.
And so do you think you can find the infamous temporary employee?
I think we could. I think we could. It's through a temp agency. It's a very specific type of role that I think is more of like a coordination of services role, really also bilingual, that would be able to provide some direct interpretation services, both in person and elsewhere. So I. So I think we would be able to find it, but you know, we'll have to recruit for that certainly.
And I think the reason for how we would apply the funds is that our workload around language access services just continues to expand. As the community size grows, as we have quality incentive metrics now that require us to translate 100% of documents, client-facing documents into Spanish across the entire department, we just are finding that the workload is growing significantly. So we're managing contracts, we're managing language access requests, we're managing outreach into the community, training staff on how to request interpreters. All of that is workload currently performed by one, you know, Elizabeth Sanchez. And so this would really sort of increase the footprint of that capacity within the department and provide a little bit of relief where there's been a pretty significant growth in demand. And it's a demand that we want to be responsive to, and we now must be responsive to because of quality incentive metrics at the community level.
I had a friend write Chinese characters for my name in a statement, and I took a photo of it with Google Translate, and it had it spot on. I mean, it was just characters to me, and it converted it. It's amazing technology that's out there right now. So you mentioned customer-facing documents converted to Spanish?
Yeah.
So do we have two versions of things now we're holding on to?
We have.
As in somebody writes a report, and then somebody converts it, and then we're holding on to two things?
We are, most of the time, if it's a report that we're generating, like for the court, we're not, we don't have capacity to translate those sorts of things into Spanish. But all of our documents, like client consent to treatment, informational handouts, rack cards that tell the community about services that are available, great intake packets. By law, we must be able to provide those to individuals in their native language. And in our community, that is primarily Spanish. We don't have as large a number of people in need of other kinds of language services, although we have that on occasion. In addition, these individuals are also helping people that are not able to hear. So our language services are beyond just people who can't speak English. Elizabeth Sanchez has done a considerable amount of work around making services accessible to people that can't hear or can't see. So our language services are much broader than just translating documents into Spanish. It's making sure that anything a client has to sign on the dotted line is in a language that they understand or that they can access if they can't hear or can't read.
Great, well, yeah, seeing the Pacific Source quality incentive metric efforts provide these dollars, it's an effort we can definitely participate in.
I'm really excited to see this initiative move forward and so that we can provide better service to everyone in Deschutes County.
So I'll move approval to authorize the application for this Pacific Source Behavioral Health Workforce Diversity Grant.
Second.
Are there any further questions? Okay, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. So it should be available then shortly, right? As soon as you get the application in almost?
As soon as we get the application in, we should be able to recruit.
The applications due Friday, I believe.
Okay, well.
It's only Monday.
December 2nd, you've got several days.
And I'm not sure what's next on the agenda. Is it Shannon? I may just, I may just stay here to be with Shannon.
Actually, it's.
Property item.
Yeah, I thought there was one in between.
You guys are after the property item. Somehow this got in between, I don't know how. But things happen sometimes.
Take a little break.
Okay, thank you, Kristi.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Kristi Bullinger, Deschutes County Property Management. We're here today for consideration of board signature for order number 2022-068 to authorize the sale of certain county-owned property by private sale. So at the conclusion of our October 7th, 2022 auction, we offered 13 properties and 10 sold, and that left three unsold. In accordance with ORS 27, Oregon Rev. Statute 275, counties may sell unsold property to the highest bidder after sale, or excuse me, after auction, at no less than 15% of the minimum bid previously set. So we're here today to ask the board's authorization to proceed with any offers that meet that criteria. And at this point, I'll pause for any questions.
One of the things I am curious about is where these properties sit in relation to South County groundwater issues. So are these, do you have a sense of whether these three properties are shallow groundwater sites? You know, if so, and if these are neighborhoods that are having, you know, groundwater quality challenges, there's, there might be an argument to be made for holding on to them as sites for potential, you know, community-scale wastewater systems in the future. You know, when, you know, when we get the land use approvals to be able to do such, you know, like very localized systems, there's going to be a need for locations to put them. So I'm just wondering about that. Given that they didn't sell in the first go-round, and we're talking about dropping, you know, dropping the minimum price 15% already, I'm just wondering if there's an argument to just hold on to them for a little while? Because, you know, we're not getting, you know, we're not getting the initial minimum price. So, you know, does that make it so that the other potential values of these lands, you know, justified just holding them for a little bit?
Sure, good question. So sale ID 2022-07, the first one on the list on Bakersfield, that's in the zero to two-foot groundwater. And then so is the next one, 2022-13. I believe both of those are in the high groundwater area. And then the third one on Rainbow Drive, sale ID 2022-16, that's not in the high groundwater area. We do have offers on sale ID 2022-07 and 2022-13. And those offers, let's see, 2022-07, the standing offer 60,500. So it's about 6,000 less, plus minus 6,000 less than the minimum bid offered at auction. And then sale ID 2022-13, standing bid right now is 30,000, just barely over that. And so that's just a couple thousand less than the minimum bid offered. I can say that, to your question about property available, if the county was to proceed with, you know, kind of these sort of centralized sewage treatment, there, we do have a lot of other property.
No more.
Yeah, and we have a lot of contiguous lots. And so there might be opportunities there where these are standalone or lots that wouldn't have county-owned property right around them. So just, you know, high level, I think there would be other opportunities if that's what the county decided to do.
Okay. And in those settings, why did we pick these to auction at this point as opposed to some of the other ones?
We are kind of getting down to some of the slimmer pick-ins in terms of lots that are standalone. We're actually going to be coming and talking to your board about potentially doing some consolidations on some of our contiguous lots, just for the fact of, you know, potentially only allowing one, you know, septic system to reduce the nitrates in the water, kind of as a follow-up to the recent presentation done by DEQ and Todd Cleveland a couple months back. So these ones are just standalone. We just typically pick those, they're a little bit easier to kind of vet through the process, and so that's really why.
Okay, thank you.
So actually, we don't, we aren't taking that big of a discount then on both of these properties that you already have an offer on?
Yeah, not too much.
No.
And the only one we don't have an offer on is the one that doesn't have high groundwater.
Yeah. And that's a property that we've gone through the process to get legal possession of. And so we're going to be finishing a cleanup and whatnot. So once that's cleaned and looks a little more presentable, I suspect that we'll get a good offer.
I mean, we're actually going to clean it up? Is that what you mean? Okay. It's a bit overgrown or something?
Yeah, the prior owner left belongings and trash, and so we have to go through a cleanup on that.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Do you have a motion?
Move approval of board signature of order number 2022-068 to authorize the sale of certain county-owned properties by private sale.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're back to.
There we go.
Shannon?
All right, good afternoon, commissioners. We're here today to talk about extending our contract or continuing our contract with Youth Villages. Youth Villages currently provides our CATS, which is crisis and transition services, and our intensive in-home behavioral health therapy, or IIBHT. In 2019, there was Oregon Health Authority passed some legislature that really worked to expand the children's continuum of care. And you've maybe heard of MRSS or mobile response and stabilization services that typically come out of Holly's team. That is going to transition, CATS is going to go away. CATS effective 12/31, so at the end of next month will go away. And MRSS will stand up. As part of MRSS standing up, which is how we respond to children who are in the hospital or in crisis services, we're building a continuum of care. So we started this effort in 2020 with a contract with Youth Villages to bring intensive in-home behavioral health therapy to Deschutes County. We could do that ourselves, or we could contract it out. And we elected to contract it out through Youth Villages. At the same time, CATS going away. We have a need to continue to support Youth Villages in providing intensive in-home behavioral health therapy and responding to our youth who are in crisis. So this is a step-down, so to speak. What will happen now is our crisis team will be contacted either by the hospital or through 998, or through our crisis stabilization center of a youth or family who needs services. If they determine that those services can be met within the community, the crisis team will coordinate with Youth Villages, who will provide IIBHT services up to 56 days post that crisis intervention. And during that time, they'll provide individual therapy, family therapy, skills building, coordination for psychiatric care, and coordination of care. It's very similar to CATS. It just has a few additional services that are needed in addition to what we offered through CATS, so, but very, very similar. So this is a continuation of what we started to build a year or so ago. It combines two different dollars or funding streams. One is through our System of Care Expansion Grant, so that's money that will end in 2024. We'll use roughly $40,000 there. And then we'll have some money that was earmarked for MRSS through our IGA, and will filter down into the Youth Villages program. Youth Villages is working to have this be something that they are reimbursed through, completely through insurance. Right now, they're contracting with Pacific Source, who covers roughly 75% of their costs. So our funding is pretty minimal, but will help us increase. Right now, we have offered 10 CATS beds. And through this additional growth and what we're contributing, along with Pacific Source, them funding it, they'll be able to move up to 36 beds to support youth and families. So from 2018 until now, Youth Villages saw 806 clients that they diverted through crisis services. So they're pretty busy. So investing in Youth Villages and helping them expand as part of our children's continuum of care is really important. We have to see those individuals with or without Youth Villages. So us contracting for them gives us that community stabilization. We, right now, for CATS, crisis and transition services, about 38% of our referrals come from outside of the hospital through our crisis team. And the other 62% of those referrals come through the emergency room. Ideally, if we can prevent a youth from going to the emergency room, that's what we want to do. And that's one of the major differences between CATS and MRSS is that previously you had to go to the emergency room to get Youth Villages services, and you no longer have to. So we're here today to request continuing of funding. I'm sure you have questions for me, and I'll do the best I can to answer them.
When you mentioned the beds, what are you referring to? You know, I wasn't following the concept about.
Slots, slots. So yeah, openings, so to speak, caseload size, thank you.
Yeah, because I was like, what beds, where are these beds?
Beds, there are the beds. Yeah.
Beds are in the kids' homes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's how we support them, so yeah, thanks.
It sounds like a great program, and I'm going to be supportive, so I don't have any other questions. We'll see where it goes here.
Yeah, one of the things I'll say is that CATS is pretty effective. About 90%, 97% of youth that enter the CATS program don't have a readmission or suicidal ideation while they're involved in the CATS program. That's pretty good. 83% of families who are offered CATS participate and complete the program. So a pretty good turnaround. Again, they work to coordinate care to make sure individuals who weren't previously connected to a mental health provider or a primary care provider are connected. And then they do a lot of school coordination to help youth transition back into the school setting or have support in the school setting.
So is children 18 and under?
It's actually 20 and under for MRSS, yeah.
Okay.
But you are correct in that previously, under CATS, it was 18 and under. MRSS kind of increases that a little bit.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask for a little bit more qualitative description of, you know, what the impact of this program is and, you know, diversion, you know, diversion of people from the emergency department, reduction in suicidal ideation. Those are all, those are very good things. I mean, is there kind of more, more that you would?
Yeah, I tried to find some more information for you. IIBHT is new. It is currently endorsed by SAMSA as the way to offer services for kids. But it is relatively new. University of Washington is working on standardized training and how they're going to measure that through the HOPE scale. But it is not something that has a whole lot of data out there to say, hey, if we do this, this is what will happen. It is part of legislature, and it is something that we do have to do, but there's not a whole lot out. Most of the data is related to CATS, which is what I gave you, versus actually IIBHT. Very similar approach, just an increase in terms of psychiatric care coordination and length of how long they're going to provide that service afterwards.
Thank you.
I did bring you a little family, a little family blurb though, if you want that.
Oh, sure, that would be good.
Sure, okay. So, and again, specific to CATS, but the importance of how this transition happens. But CATS helped us connect us to resources in a way that we wouldn't be able to do on our own. They were familiar with the landscape, the program has connections, and it's huge. The providers had really good rapport with my child. They needed to talk to my child in an understanding way. CATS was honest and helpful.
So yeah, I'll move board signature of document number 2022-813, the contract with Youth Villages to provide intensive in-home behavioral health treatment services.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go, thank you.
Okay, we're at item number 10. Good afternoon, Robert?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Robert, Tantil, Chief Financial Officer. I'm here today, we're talking about consideration of resolution 2022-077, transferring contingency within the 2022-2023 budget. This item is for Alfalfa Fire District. Last time I came to you was October 26th, and that's when the board approved the loan for Alfalfa Fire District. Since then, the. District. Since then, the Board, the Alfalfa Fire District Board, has approved that loan documents. The documents have been signed, so now we have all the required paperwork. Now, what we need is actually the budget authority, the resolution, to actually go ahead and distribute those funds. So, this is just continuation of that conversation and doing the last piece of that, so we can actually issue them the check.
And it just comes out of contingency of this year's budget, just that little, little $100,000. Oh, yeah, moving those dollars there, and then...
That's right. And then, as the loan is repaid, it will be paid back to the general fund, plus the interest, so all that will go right back into the general fund as well.
I'm really glad we were able to do this for the Alfalfa Fire District. They have the infrastructure that they need to better serve the people of their district. I would be curious, I mean, if you could give us a sense of, you know, these $100,000 are going out as a loan, just a 4% interest rate, and repayment will start at a certain point. If we instead took these dollars and put them into, you know, any of the places where we invest, invest funds, you know, after 10 years or 20 years, what is the difference for us in terms of, you know, what are we missing out on?
Right.
Essentially, in terms of returns.
And it really depends on the rate. One thing is, the loan was written at a 4% interest rate, and that was based on the 10-year Treasury note at that time. If we were to invest in Treasuries for 10 years, we would have gotten that same rate. So, that's the rate we've given to them. Right now, we do know our investment, the short term, two-year, three-year, is higher than that, because we have an inverted yield curve, which we'll talk about in a few minutes. So, the rate could have been higher on a short term, but for all intents and purposes, we use the same rate that we could have earned if we were investing that in a 10-year Treasury as well.
Okay. Well, that's good. Not a huge impact.
Well, I'll be really happy when they get their well done, so that they don't have to rent a brusada to fill up their water truck. I think that might be really a good way forward for the community of Alfalfa.
I think they might still need to go to brusada to fill their fire truck. I mean, my impression was that this well would help, you know, this would provide well water for the building, but not necessarily for the volumes of water necessary to fill up their fire truck.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the resolution?
I move approval of resolution 2022-077, transferring contingency within the 2022-23 Deschutes County budget.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair of the chair. Thank you for that. And now, we have your Treasury for last month.
Yep. Thank you. So, again, Robert Tintil, Chief Financial Officer. Thank you. Today, we are presenting the October financial reports. And again, these are based on unaudited numbers at this point. First, we'll start with the Treasury report. And again, I'd like to start just with macro level, higher level. First, as you may know or may have heard, just recently, November 2, the feds did increase the Fed borrowing rate again by 75 basis points. So, now, it's in that 3.75% to 4% federal funds rate. And that brings up the total, in addition to the 375 basis points they have increased it since, actually, let's see, March 17, 2022, that rate was at 20.25% to 0.50. So, now, we're up to, all the way from up to 3.75% to 4%. So, quite an increase. So, now, the discussion is, where will we go from here at the federal funds rate? And again, these federal rates end up impacting our local rates and our investments and other factors here. So, the Fed continues to assess "ongoing increases", is their quote, "that they'll likely be needed to bring rates to a level that is sufficiently restrictive," is their turn, "to return inflation to 2% over time." So, that's what they're looking at. They want to get inflation down to 2%, and they'll do that by increasing, continuing to increase rates. But the question is, how fast or how high will they go? So, now, the Fed's focus is on the lag, the lagged effect of the monetary policy, suggesting that they're willing to slow the pace of rate hikes in order to assess their earlier increases that they've already had, to see how that's affecting the economy now. So, there is question, the next rate hike will be in December. Right now, the market's building in a 50-basis-point rate hike. They're assuming that it's 76% probability, as opposed to a 75-basis-point rate increase. So, we'll see come December what the next increase will be. The economists are going back and forth, even the feds, as far as what is the rate and the pace of future increases, and then where will we reach that cap? As briefly mentioned earlier, the 10-year Treasury now is at 3.67, where the two-year Treasury is at 4.46. Again, it's that inverted yield curve. Traditionally, you get a longer return, a higher return the longer out, but in this case, it's inverted. It's the other way around. So, now, we're actually, so that's kind of at the macro level, but now, we will get to our Treasury report, and you should have that in front of you in page 112 on the packet. Just one thing, there was a training, a webinar that was put on by one of our brokers, and the question is, how do you manage your portfolio in the case of rising interest rates? And the good news is, it's basic concepts that we already follow, but just to reiterate here, obviously, focus on your cash flow projections and expectations. You always want to have investments mature when you need the money. Maintain proper diversification. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket. Maintain long-term portfolio strategy. With that, they mean, don't try to time the market or guess the market, because that's not our role, right? We just want to be investing as we go along. And then, finally, yes, seek opportunities to increase portfolio income. After safety, liquidity, then comes the yield. So, with that, on our memorandum today, you'll see the portfolio balance at the end of October was $295 million. That's about what it was at at this time last year, but it is an increase from September of $30 million, and again, a 37 increase from last year, but again, in round numbers, it's right within staying in level where it was. Good news, as we start seeing the investment returns increasing, we'll slowly and steadily see our investment income continue to increase. For the month, it increased 200, up to $292,000, or approximately $52,000 more than last month, and $178,000 more than October of 2021. So, our year-to-date earnings of $941,000 are about $430,000 more than year-to-date earnings last year. And again, we should see that growth continue. The LGIP interest rate did increase during October to 2.20%, but since then, they've actually increased more as well. So, just up to date, recently in November, they've increased, first November 1, to 2.50%, and then again, on November 16, up to 2.85%. Again, it's still lacking what we're getting, we can get now in investment earnings, but it's a good sign that the LGIP Local Government Investment Pool, they are increasing their rates. Let's see.
Is that why we went down to $15 million in that, I guess, at the end of the month?
A lot of times, it's between, if you add our LGIP amount and the First Interstate Bank, adding between those two, because actually, that's a great point. One thing I was really impressed with, the contract here, First Interstate Bank gives us the same interest rate that the LGIP gives us, which is a great thing, because I haven't always seen that in other banks. So, that's a great thing. So, that gives us the flexibility to either keep funds in the LGIP or in the FIB, depending on what we're paying out.
And we don't have a restriction on the amount of funding, then, in First Interstate?
That is correct. That is correct, with First Interstate. Yep. We still want to keep our investments, our funds invested where we can, but it's good that while they're sitting there for liquidity, that we can earn a better interest rate, and typically would have been. Our benchmark returns for the 24-month Treasuries are up from the prior month by 29 basis points, and 36-month Treasuries are up from the prior month at 20 basis points. The weighted average of the portfolio is 1.33 years compared to 1.36 in September, so just slightly, a little bit shorter on that one. One thing to keep in mind, as mentioned, yes, our rates are higher in the short term, so we are focusing on that, but we are still investing long-term, because you want to avoid reinvestment risk, which that is, if you just invest in a short term, one, two, three years, or one or two years, well, then, as those mature, if rates do go lower, well, then, you're buying investments, purchasing investments at a lower investment rate. I mean, if you would have held it just a little bit longer, you would have earned a little more funds. So, overall, we're in line with where we should be. Any questions on the Treasury report, that first page? Okay, we'll move on to page 113 in your packet. Again, that just speaks to the 24-month historic returns. You'll see all the trajectory, the top graph is on the increase. We should continue to see that as we go along. The middle graph, the three-year portfolio balance, again, that's where you can kind of see our last year to this year. It's about at the same point, rough average numbers. And then, the five-year maturity schedule, again, we try to evenly distribute those funds coming, maturing, but also based on our cash flow as well. Page 114, you'll notice, it is now sideways, but that's because I did ask them to make this to landscape, so that actually, I could read the numbers a little bit better, and hopefully, you'll all be able to do that, too. So, that does reference the investments that we purchased this year and last year in October. Moving to page 116 in your packet, that's the Position Control Summary. One other slight incremental update I asked them to do on this report is, you'll notice on the bottom, there's a line that has total for the filled, adding up the filled and unfilled positions. That way, myself and you, you don't have to add up the total position, so you can see the change there month by month. And we also added a note there of what the actual increase was for the month and where those positions were increased. So, you can see, in October, our FTE were increased by 2.50 FTE, and that was one FTE in the DA's office, one in Health Services, and a half FTE in Victims Assistance.
Thanks for adding that. That's better clarity.
Yeah, small little item there. And again, our unfilled percentage rate, it's still over 11%, and you can see within the departments where the percentages are.
And 911 is still at 15%.
That's right. We still need some positions filled.
Actually, nine. Nine and a half.
Yep. Health Services also still sees needs increase as well, and others. All right, we'll move on to page 117 in your packet. This is the General Fund Budget to Actuals Report. We are at 33% of the fiscal year, so as you noticed throughout all these percents, as you're looking at it, October was 33% of the year. And as again, a reminder, the General Fund revenues, typically, property tax major revenue comes in November, so this is through October, leading us right up to next month, and we'll talk more about property tax revenues in next month. Revenue year-to-date in the General Fund is 6.2 million, or 14% of the budget, and last year, it was at 6.8 million, or 16% at this point in time. And expenses are higher at 14.5 million. They were 13.4 last year, but again, at 32% this year, it is right in line with the 33% of where we would expect and where we would be budgeting there. Page 118 in your packet, it just starts the, this is the All Departments' Combined Report. The total resources, you'll see the projection is at 110%. It's that last column there on the right. So, we're in line or a little better where we're projecting at this point, and this is all funds combined as well. Page 119 in your packet, Total Requirements, and that's where you'll see we're at 98%. We're projecting out the last column there. Expenditures will be $426 million versus the budget, $437. So, there'll be a little savings in that area. We'll talk about a lot of these funds as we go through for more of the detail. Page 121 in your packet, it's the total of all funds combined, all departments. It's our, you'll notice the budget in the middle column is expecting total fund balance to be $131 million. We do project out, all funds will be $165 million, so a little more than we were originally anticipating. So, now, page 122 in your packet is the General Fund. We'll concentrate on that. As mentioned, property taxes haven't come in yet. One thing that we did note, there's a, on property taxes, is that the actual 22-23 taxable assessed value is 5.5%, which is slightly, it's less than the 5.55% budgeted. So, there was a slight difference there between what was budgeted, between what the assessed value actually came in. So, there was a slight decrease in that amount. Also, in the revenues there for resources, for the Clerk's Office, you'll see the projection in the last column has a decrease of $700,000 estimated, and the note on that one is also because they are expecting lower recordings to come in lower than budget due to the decreased loan application. So, as we talk about, interest rates continue to increase. On home sales, there's less people, obviously, refinancing a new home sale, so that affects the revenues coming in there as well. Most of the savings within the General Fund, again, are due to the vacancies that we're having there, and that will continue on until we get those positions filled. Next page, 123 in your packet, is Juvenile Fund. One thing I'll point out there, this fund is, you know, on target, but I do want to point out interest on investments. And this is a comment you'll see, I won't make a comment on each fund, but you'll see that same projection on each of the funds, as interest rates continue to increase, and we're getting more interest revenue in based on the way budgeted. So, you'll see that a consistent theme on a lot of these. Some funds, it's a smaller amount. Other funds, it'll be a higher amount in some of those projections. Page 124 in your packet is the Transient Room Tax Fund. You'll see, as of this date, it was October, and the room tax collections were 7.2% over last year versus the 5% budget assumption. If you've received the most recent TRT reports, that is now down to 6.4%. Again, we're only four or five months in. We'll see where the trend goes, but it did decrease year-to-date, this is a year-to-date, from 7.2 to 6.4 in November, and we'll see that happen there. Next page, 125 in your packet, is the ARPA Fund. This is the first month that you'll see that this report shows the local assistance and tribal consistency fund revenue that came in, and that was $2.3 million. So, that was the, you'll see that in the middle actuals column. So, this is where we first recorded this revenue again. The revenue hasn't been allocated. We will do that through the budgeting process as well.
And even though it says tribal consistency, all those funds are for Deschutes County?
That's our portion directly. Correct. Deschutes County was allocated $2.3 million in fiscal year '23. We anticipate we'll also receive the $2.3 million in fiscal year '24.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And it's all ARPA funds, and we're just, we'll track it and keep it separate for our reporting with Treasury as well. We have to report on those funds, too. Okay, I flipped page 127, which is the Sheriff's Office, Fund 255. Again, comment A and B, just want to highlight on there, the assessed value is 5.50 versus the 5.55 budgeted for the LED 1 and the District 2, 4.79 versus 5.45. So, you see the differences there in the last column for projections, estimated there. Again, minor, not a huge dollar volume there, as far as the difference goes. The Resources Over Requirements for the year, I just want to highlight that towards the bottom, under Fund Balance. The budget was at $10.8 million, their Resources Over Requirements, and in this case, it will be 10.1. So a decrease there from what they anticipated as well. So we'll be looking at that. The next funds will be the Health Funds. I'll move over to page 129 in your packet, which is Health Services Admin. Uh, on their resources side, the revenue, uh, A, comment A. Again, this is an increase in FEMA expenditures and vaccine clinic outreach, which would be additional, uh, reimbursement grants for some of those costs. And that's related to Item C, where you'll see their expenditures go up. More expenditures and then also more reimbursement revenue coming in from FEMA. Page 130, Behavioral Health Fund. On their resources, A, it's, uh, you'll see a 1.1 million projection in the last column there on the right, is where they anticipate being at the end of the year. And that's due to an increase in new funds related to their aid and assist, uh, program and cost of living adjustment on their contracts and a carryforward amount. In their requirements, again, like a lot of funds, uh, comment D, you'll notice there, it's the savings due to, personnel projections are based on year-to-date vacancy savings and they assume 10% moving forward. So until we start filling those positions, we'll still see those savings reflected in these budget reports. Next page, 131, Health Fund 274. Uh, just pointing out, comment D on State Medicaid and Medicare up above on the resources. And that the Medicaid revenue is trending more than budgeted for the Family Support Services, the Nurse Home Visiting Program. So they increased their estimates in that program. And E is also due to the vacancy savings, which is their savings in their, uh, personnel costs. Why you notice that savings. Fund 132, Community Development Fund. Uh, if you look at their projections in the last column on the right, you'll see they're all going down. Uh, that's due to the volume decrease. That year-to-date revenue collection is lower due to the anticipated, uh, decrease in application volume. Think we're aware of that. And then again, their savings with their requirements, year-to-date variance projections is due to vacancy savings. And the last page I'll highlight is page 134, which is Adult Prolo and Probation Fund 355. Just looking at their expenditures, column D and E, again, uh, they have some vacancy, uh, savings, reduced expenditures as well. But also, comment E for their adult treatment court closure and based on other expense trends. So they did, uh, increase their, uh, sorry, decrease their expenditures projections compared to their budget by a small amount due to the, those costs, their savings there. And unless you have questions on other funds, uh, that'll be the end of my official report. But I'm happy to take questions for you, if you have any.
I did notice that on the, um, Community Development, it was down at 29% for the, the revenue of fiscal year-to-date. So, um, their expenses were at 27%. So there, but it does appear that they're slowing down a bit, though the, um, solid waste, I believe it was about even, wasn't it? I know that's one of our economic indicators.
Yeah, solid waste has brought in 36% revenue year-to-date. That's page 137 of your packet. And the, uh, expenditure so far at 23%. Yes. So they're, they, they appear to be on target, appear to be on target year-to-date as well. That's why I didn't highlight them this, this month.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Were your pages numbered?
Uh, they are not, and that's just because it was printed off as, as the financial report, not after the packet came back out.
Right. Okay.
But we can look for that. So-
Hopefully, next month it should be.
Well, well, no, so you, it was emailed to us, here's the packet. So then it was printed, and then it gets published, you know, for our, for our budget meeting. And then if it's printed out after that, then it gets numbered to what you were referring to.
I think there was just an oversight that the full report wasn't included in the agenda packet this time. So it got added afterwards. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Laurel, I pointed out, we had a very, um, a lot of agenda items today, 11. Are there any other items that we want to address at this moment before we go to executive?
Uh, yeah, so for other items, I've just got a couple. Remember, we had, uh, we had been asked, or this mock congressional hearing for Trinity Lutheran is on December 14th. It's a Wednesday, so we're going to schedule around a one to three o'clock event there. But they also asked us if anybody would like to be a judge. And I don't know if we all got that email or not. So just offering to, and I'm not sure how we're going to schedule, if we're going to have a board meeting, they'll just stop before that? Or if we might have? You know, if we, if we had a busy day, we could end up-
I think we might have a busy day because we don't have a meeting on Monday, do we?
December 14th.
So that, that day is going to be rather, um, probably perhaps busy. Who knows?
So, yeah, we'll play it by ear. But then, as I say, there's an offer for us to be judges if we're in the room. So I'm sure that can, you know, just plug us in if we want to be participating. Last Wednesday, I was able to go tour the Roosevelt Landfill and the Renewable Natural Gas Production Facility. So that was really interesting, uh, seeing the, uh, the capture system and learning about the different steps of, uh, removing the moisture, removing the CO2, moving the nitrogen, the silicates or whatever the terminology is, uh, all the different, uh, science and technology that goes through that. And, uh, also, that facility has been utilized, a reciprocal engine, which is a combustion engine, and a jet engine to make electricity, and now they're doing renewable, uh, natural gas. So they've gone through all three of the technologies that have been in place for many years. And I got to see it all firsthand. So if there's any other, uh, you know, contracting and effort, efforts that's going to come our way for our landfill, I'll have a little bit more firsthand information.
I've, I've heard from, uh, our Solid Waste Department that the agreements are this close.
Right.
For our, our landfill methane gas energy project. But not there yet.
Okay. And I did have a COAC safety meeting today. It was actually the second one. And unfortunately, the numbers that had looked really good prior to the last couple of months have now turned around. We have a lot more fatalities of drivers. People are going too fast. Drug use is up, I believe, like 55%. Alcohol and speed was the third leading cause. So, yes, we had, um, our safety meeting trying to address, uh, what's happening in the three counties. So it's, it's good to know that we are looking at all the different things. Apparently, yes, people, um, yeah, it's going the wrong way. So we've got to get back, as the Mothers Against Drug Driving said, it's gone from someone getting killed every 51 minutes to now every 45 minutes from, from someone that's, um, uh, drinking. So that, that was my meeting at 11 this morning. So Nick, do you have anything?
We do. Whitney and I can tag team it, and perhaps Janice as well, if you'd like to provide comments. But do you want to take the lead? Or would you like me to start?
Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. We received a request, um, through the county's lobbyist, Doug Riggs, last week. Um, he was contacted by CLO, the Coalition of Local Health Officials, about a letter, uh, related to public health modernization funding and the policy option package that's been put forward by the Oregon Health Authority. And so, um, we wanted to connect with the board on the draft letter. I sent it electronically last week, and I have hard copies upstairs. So if I need to bring them down, I can run upstairs and bring them down. But, um, to see if the county might be interested in adding a logo as a partner agency on this letter, which is addressed to Governor-elect Kotek.
And we need to, what, does that need to go by the first of December, right?
Yep.
So just wanted to connect with the board to see if that's something that you'd be interested in us coordinating with, um, with Doug and CLO on to move forward.
I'm supportive.
Sure. Okay, of course.
All right. All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
So we just need to sign the letter upstairs then?
I think, um, I'll coordinate with Doug, but I think it actually may just be the addition of a logo. I don't know if, um, they're going to request signatures, but we'll track down the details before the first and get them what they need.
Okay.
So my only thought is, uh, putting it in perspective, you know, like if, uh, if someone was to ask, uh, you know, is that a bigger ask than the last time? Or is it, you know, transformational? I don't have any talking points that I know that what we're specifically doing there. And as I say, the content of the letter has slipped me. I didn't, didn't review that. But, uh, just for the legislative session, and we, I guess, maybe this is for Janice or whoever you know, when we get to our lobby, uh, meetings, you know, let's get to the content. Okay, we're asking for this. How does it fit into previous biennium asks? That's all I'm thinking.
And just to, what's in the letter, it references $286 million that are being requested, but doesn't necessarily give context to how that-
I know the number, too, but I don't know what, if that's big or small or transformational, or I don't have a feel for it.
My, my understanding is it would increase funding compared to the last biennium.
Yeah.
I don't know the exact number.
Yeah, so we'll learn more about it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Tom Coon keeps pretty close tracks on CLO, so he should be able to give us, get us, you know, get us that information quickly.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Are we good? Okay. Stephanie, could we go to executive, please?